Being ordered, and we're starting with pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, October 13th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant. Please silence and turn off your cellphones. I'd like to remind everybody, if you listen to what I just said, that the meeting next time is at Island View Restaurant, and we will be meeting there on a permanent basis. So, just to remind you, that we will be meeting at 9 o'clock at the Island View Restaurant. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any comment?
I have some general comments. Could I make them now, or?
Yep.
I just wanted to make a few statements and some comments. First, I'd like to congratulate, or I guess congratulate is the word, Tanya's organization for what has happened in the past week and a half. This was not an easy thing. Everybody predicted that storm was going to be a lot less than what it was, the impact, and she spent hourless days and nights. I was over the district a few times, not as much as she was. She was there 16, 17 hours a day. Her phone was going constantly, and I think she did an outstanding job. That goes and is extended to her organization as well, be it the external people out on the roads, as well as the administrative people that were in the operation. And while we were all worrying about our homes and getting water and coffee and things of that nature, she was worrying about the district and the people within the district. Likewise, I'd like to make a comment also about Michael. Michael was out there with his organization, trying to clean up the roads to get passage so we could bring in the emergency trucks. They were both, I believe that Tanya and Mike were on the phones with various organizations, be it Comcast, Duke Energy, and so on, multiple times, including people in Tallahassee. So, Mike had even gone to the point of, there were a number of calls coming in from our snowbirds, or people that are not down here, and their concerns about their homes. And while all of this is going on, Mike put a team together, including his wife, and they went out, and every phone call that they received from the outside, they went and took, or went out and looked at those homes, and then contacted those residents to give them a report. And I think this is way above and beyond. His organization also was out there cutting a lot of trees to get them off the road. So, you know, we don't see a lot of this unless you go out there, you won't see the large sinkholes, you won't see the damage and the devastation that has been caused by this. So, I wanted to make that comment. I also wanted to talk a little bit Jim Kurtzborn. Is he here? No.
Not yet.
Okay. Well, Jim Kurtzborn's organization, he had his staff as well out on the golf course. And when I say his staff, I'm talking his PGA professionals, his assistant pros and so on, people from the cart barn, clearing the course to try to get in some kind of operation. So, unfortunately, he's not here. I mentioned at the last meeting, possibly a special assessment, and I think that might come to fruition, be a $25 or a $30 assessment. We don't know if we're going to get, and maybe Tanya will be able to elaborate on this after, but we don't know if we're going to get any insurance reimbursement or FEMA or any other kind of assistance. And with the magnitude of the damage on the roads, and I'm not talking the course, I'm talking specifically cleanup around the roads, I think that we might want to think about getting that instituted, that special assessment, so that we can do the job properly. That's just a thought. Also, you know, I want to make a comment. The media rarely gets the story 100% accurate. They only have so much limited space, okay? And they kind of put snippets or words. And unfortunately, the people that are in here, on a week-to-week basis, or biweekly, care a lot about this community. Unfortunately, the people outside don't understand the details of what goes on and what these board members go through. We're all big boys, and we know that you're going to take some heat. But I can assure you that I, as well as I'm going to speak for these, and we are trying our best to do what's best for this total community, not one segment of this community. And hopefully, we can move forward and be a lot more productive than what we have recently. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have anything? Okay. Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. I need a motion to accept the action agenda.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Public hearing, resolution number 2017-0922-53. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to establish and adopt the final budget for the fiscal year 2018, based on the estimate of revenues and expenditures for the district's general utility, golf, and capital funds, confirming the annual operation and maintenance assessment rates, providing for conflicts, providing for severity and providing an effective date. I need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
None for me.
Public comment? Tanya, do you want to?
So, we just want to provide a quick summary. We've gone through six workshops going over the budget. There's been a lot of changes back and forth. This is our working.
All right. I think this one's working for sure. So, like I said, we just want to give a quick summary. We've gone through six budget workshops. There's been a lot of changes back and forth. There's been a lot of public comments. I think we've taken everything into consideration from the board and the public. We've come up to a $10,000,000, $10,800,000 budget total to cost the three funds, general, utility, and golf. You know, there's several projects in each category. Utility has about $300,000 coming out of reserves for projects, 150 coming out of operating, and we have about $580,000 coming out of the general fund for projects and capital expenditures. So, that's it.
Thank you, Omar. Is there any public comment? Just come up to the mic up here and identify yourself, ma'am.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of this budget?
Yes, ma'am. Could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Suzie Johnson. I live at 4808 Bobadilla Avenue here in Sun and Lake District. And I have some comments to make later on in the comment section for public, but I would like to have a copy of the budget.
Okay. Does your comment, right, does your comments later for the budget?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Tanya, just can make sure she can.
All the information is available online, but any copies can be, we can certainly provide that to you at the district office, copies of the budget. District office is at 5306 Sun and Lake Boulevard. Okay, thank you.
Any more public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Item number B is a discussion with EO Cook Construction Company, contract completion date for the public works facility project.
Good morning. My name's Aaron Nadaske, EO Cook Construction. I just wanted to give you guys a project update on the maintenance facility project. Right now, the buildings, just to start off, the buildings look amazing. We're finishing up the main building now. We're putting in the fire protection system next week. We're putting in the countertops today. The tile's been completed, the drywall's completed, the paint's completed, trim doors, hardware are in, the bathroom fixtures are in, the specialties have been put in. We're planning next week, if we can get power from Duke, we're still hopeful, to finish the main building next week, do the epoxy flooring the following week, and then start to punch out after that. So, that's the main buildings, the site. We're finishing the concrete pads as we speak, doing the final grading on the project, bringing in the crushed concrete for the paving section number three, and we're going to start the installation of the irrigation next week as well. So, the fencing has been completed. We're waiting, I think, on a change order, final approval for a change order for adding a couple gate operators and relocating some of the fencing, and we can get the fencing completed. But we had some delays to start with on the project, but with the hurricane, we've had a substantial greater delay, and we don't know the full impacts of what that's going to, what it's going to take and how far it's going to extend the project schedule out right now. We've had contractors that were supposed to be in before the storm, prepping for the storm, so they didn't make it, and then they lost power, just like our cabinets and countertops, same thing. You know, the guy lost power, so he was not able to finish it, and now, you know, it's been two weeks and he's getting back on it. But we've had, on the site work, we've had, you know, some erosion problems with the, you know, we had the parking lot ready to pave. We've got to regrade the whole parking lot now, regrade the swells, and get it ready. And then our paving company is saying they don't know when we can get back on the schedule. You know, they're doing roads and primary resources first, and then coming back to the projects they had on the books. So, with that being said, I'm not sure what our final completion date's going to end up being, but we're going to stay on the job and keep working as hard as we can until it's finished.
Aaron, at what point do you believe that you'll know where the completion date will stand? I mean, do you need another two, three, four weeks, or we?
Well, it depends on our asphalt. If we can get asphalt, then I can tell you the date that we plan on finishing, because we know from that point, once we pave, how long it's going to take to finish the landscape and the irrigation, get our, you know, all of our inspections and everything. But until we get, until we get the actual asphalt on the books and installed, then it's going to be pretty difficult to say, and he won't, they won't tell me a date.
Okay. And how long do county inspections normally take after completion?
The building inspection doesn't take long, but after, after we get the building inspection, the site inspections usually take a while, because we have to have, we have to have testing done, we have to have surveys, as-built surveys done, and then the engineer will come out, do a punch list. We complete the punch list, then we get the county out, and they do a punch list. We complete that punch list if there's any items, and then we can get a final completion on the project. So, it takes, it takes time. It takes definitely a couple weeks to get that done.
You guys got any questions? Have you worked? I can tell you, we're just questioning out. But I just recommend doing what you can do, and if you get held up by the county or Duke, that's fine, but this is, you know, it's just, it's frustrating.
Oh, yes, sir.
For us.
For us, definitely, as well.
Aaron, I know you don't have a crystal ball, and nobody could foresee the devastation that the storm did, and I think everybody would be in agreement that kind of your hands are tied on this one. Do you have a best guest, guest estimate? Are we talking January? Are we talking February? Are we talking December?
I honestly, I honestly think it'll be done sometime in December. But like I said, until we, until we can actually get that on the schedule, it's hard to, it's hard to tell. But if we can, once we get the paving scheduled, and if it's four weeks out now, that puts us the first of November, and then, once he's done, we need about three weeks to finish the job, and then we need another couple weeks to, for the inspections and the punch list. So, that's why I'm saying kind of December's what I feel like, if we can get on the books. But he wouldn't even, he wouldn't even say it'll be sometime this month. You know, it was, you know, we're trying to fix roads so people can get to their houses. We're trying to, you know, we've got creeks that are still, you know, washed out, and we've got to take care of this stuff first, so.
Well, I agree, Aaron, but I wasn't talking about after the hurricane. We had a date, I thought you were going to come today, or somebody, as of November 1st.
Yes, sir. That's what we thought to begin with. That's where.
Yeah, okay. You got a, you got an out now with the hurricane, but I just think we, you know, we need to, and I, and I agree, the hurricane victims come first, and we should, but it's the prior to November 1st than to the hurricane that I'm talking about, so.
Yes, sir. Initially, that's what we were projecting, was November 1st, so.
Sounds like you're doing the best you can in the given situation. Follow-up, I guess, to it would be?
Mark, can I say something? The day after the storm, both, both these guys were out here checking, actually, the day of the storm, on a Monday, around 4:30, they were out here checking the area already. So, that, they came out to our project, checked it right away, and started right back to work. Yes, they are behind, but I was really impressed of what, when they showed up right away. So, I just want to let you know that, that they've been there for us all along.
Okay. And I actually saw him out there. I saw him putting up around the retention pond and some other things doing work. I guess my question, and maybe you can answer this, I hope you can answer this, actually. There's certainly some level of dependencies on what step you can take in the next, in the next part of the job, i.e. Duke, the power that you need to get to the facility to start your, I guess, your wiring and things, correct? I know you have all the rough wiring in.
Yeah, the wiring's completed. It's just getting the actual power on the building so we can start up the ACs and get the, get all the lights on and that type of thing.
Okay. Are there any parts of that job? I mean, I understand the paving, I understand all of these things and how the delays could come about. Do you have a list of parts of the project that need to be completed, and are those types of items, can some of them be juggled around and completed in the downtime when we don't have paving or we don't have power?
Yes, sir. That's what I was saying. We're planning on having the buildings completed in a couple weeks, and it's going to be back down to the site work. Once those are completed, we'll do the punch out on those. Those will be ready to go. And what we use is, it's called a critical path, and the items that are critical to the final completion of the project are the, they're just called critical items. That's what you're describing. And then the, the items that aren't critical can be done in between, and that's absolutely what we're going to be doing.
Does Tanya or Michael have that list of items for the project? And if not, can we get them?
Yes, sir. We can get that.
Okay, thank you.
Based on what we've heard today, I think that the November 1st change order that was discussed is obviously off the table. There's no way that's can be done, so. And with what Aaron's saying now, I don't see any reason to try to create a change order at this point and try to come up with a new completion date until we have some more information. So, I mean, unless the board, you know, wants to entertain, you know, putting a date out there, I think we should just wait until we've got some more information, then have them come forward with the new change order that has the new projected completion date.
I agree with you, David, but I, well, I really don't want to wait until December 1st to say, oh, we're going to have a completion date on December 15th. I'd like to have a little better indication prior to that. But understanding the circumstances, I, you know, I'm way in agreement that, well, let's have to wait until he can get some additional information furnished to the district.
And even if we got a date, it's not, it's not in stone, right? I mean, if we give a date now, or we give a date December 1st, it could be anything, so. But thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
But can you keep in touch?
Yeah, sure.
Please.
No problem.
Okay. Any public comment?
Bill Norcross, a resident here. The last meeting we had here, there was a lot of comments about the construction of this facility, and I understand that it's very important that people understand there are delays, there are problems. It's typical here in Florida, where you have energy problems, electric problems, and everything else. But the comments from the, the comments from the district supervisors last time, that they were complaining that, and why this was brought about this week, is that a lot of people felt as though nothing was being done for periods of time. Now, I understand contract overlaps, problems, and other things like that. But in the future, I mean, we can't do anything about this. This is something that's, it's going to be done, and it's going to be done properly, and we understand that. But you'll have to maybe really consider the future contracts, and then make sure that they have a completion date with a penalty clause, so that these, these things are done and prioritized the correct way. All right, thank you.
Tom Coste, resident. I've been involved in an awful lot of projects similar to this, and I understand critical paths. As a matter of fact, I've never been on a project of a scope of this, that the critical path was not placed in the hands of the owner at the very beginning of the project. Mileposts are identified, indications of what's critical to maintain the original completion date, such as ordering of materials. I understand that we've got kind of a special case here in the district, and we try to do our own purchasing of materials, based on the list of materials that were included in the contractor's bid, and hopefully, hopefully that critical path was placed in the district's hands at the beginning of this project. I don't know if there were delays in purchasing of materials, possibly, possibly not, but I do have a couple of questions. Aaron, were there any delays that were caused that, that put us in a position of having, not completing the project prior to Irma, which was the original substantial completion and final completion dates of the project when we started? Were there any delays that were caused by inaction or late action of the district that held you up?
Tom, I can answer that. The building, the building that we picked, we put them 30 days behind right off the bat. We also met with the, with the concrete people to negotiate a cheaper price on concrete, which we had a pretty big savings there, and the building. So, right off the bat, we put the contractor behind 30 days.
Okay. So, in that case, then, certainly it's not the contractor's responsibility for that portion of the delay.
Yes.
And then, obviously, it got complicated by the fact that Irma hit, and then it starts snowballing.
Yes.
I've never, I've never heard a contractor put in a position where, please keep us informed, and this is only, this is only a guesstimate, and whatever it is, is what it's going to be. I mean, normally, the contractor's going to do everything he possibly can to stay on schedule and commit to a date, and I think that we should try to understand as soon as possible what that date's going to be. The other question I have is, was one of the delays, did it have something to do with fire protection that was not included in the initial project description? Did I hear, it seems as though I heard a, a report that the fire protection was not included in the original project scope?
That's interesting.
That had to be added? Was that, is that true, or is that?
Yeah.
No, that's not it?
No.
The other question, asphalt. We're dependent upon, is that the county asphalt plant that we're dependent upon to get asphalt to us?
Just tell us it's true.
No? Okay. So, it's, we don't know what, when asphalt will become available from whatever source? Any source? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're just, good luck, you guys. Get us a building. The next thing on the agenda is the appointment of two new supervisors. I'd like to, before I get to the resolution, have them come up and tell us a little bit, for the public's sake, who they are. Go ahead.
Let's make a motion to approve the next item on the agenda, and then we can have the candidates.
Okay. Motion to exclude. Have the candidates.
I move that we approve the item on the agenda.
Second.
Okay. So, I don't know if there's any order, but if one of you, do we need a vote?
No, we're just, it's up to us.
Okay. Would one of you come up?
Okay, pick one.
Oh, sure.
Good morning. I'm Shirley Schuman-Alegre. I'm a resident of Sun and Lakes. I would like to, first of all, thank each of the supervisors for giving me the opportunity to talk with you individually, to be able to discuss, number one, that, yes, some things are taken out of context, as well as the fact that what my goals would be if I were to become a supervisor. My goal and objective is to look at the responsibility, which I think is immense. I do appreciate what you've done. I appreciate what the staff has done. Obviously, we've had a really difficult time in the last week, and a lot of people have come to assist in that process. I also would like to say that I'm applying for the position with no agenda. If somebody's taking my words out of context, I do not come with an agenda. I believe that the whole and the global responsibility includes, excuse me, includes golf, it includes drainage and roads, it includes recreation, it includes a community, services, code enforcement. There's so many things that I think you're right. I think a lot of people don't understand how massive it is, and when looking at the budget, it's very obvious that it is quite a responsibility. As I apply for the position, I want you to know that I want you to make the choices in the best interest of the district. I believe that it's extremely important to have diversity on the board, and I'm not speaking of gender diversity. I'm speaking of quality and skills, and I hope that you'll take that into consideration. I also let you know that I have already two pre-arranged consulting trips that may make me miss a board meeting. I have only two that have been scheduled through January. If that's the case, I want that to be on the record. It's not something I would do. Any future trips would be planned outside of the board meetings, because I do think that that responsibility is extremely important. I would encourage whoever the next person is on the board to continue as the board has, to support the staff, and to support any challenges that are current, as well as any future challenges. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Shirley, yes, sir. Any, any one of the particular ones that you are applying for?
I would be applying for Kurt's position, Mr. McCullough's position.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Stegall, William Daniel Stegall. Never name your child and give them the middle name, or it confuses everybody.
Get closer to the mic, Dan.
Get a little closer to the mic, Dan.
I really don't have an agenda. I've lived at Sun and Lake off and on for 17 years, and up until the end of June, I was committed in a consulting arrangement with a bank in Virginia, that I was their succession plan. West, in Virginia, that I was their succession plan. If the president got found another job, or whatever, I had 24 hours to be in Virginia. So, I couldn't be involved in something like this. At this point in time, that consulting arrangement has ended since I hit my 70th birthday. So, I'm now available. I was, I've been president of six different banks at different times. The largest was a billion, too, in assets, with about 500 employees. So, I know a little bit about management. I know a little bit about a lot of stuff, and some stuff I don't know much about at all. But anything I could do, I would be glad to. I don't see that there should be a differentiation between golfers and non-golfers. We're all residents of Sun and Lake. All of our homes, residences, are somewhat driven equity-wise by the facilities that we have here. So, I would definitely support anything that makes sense for Sun and Lake. Thanks.
Dan, is there any particular position you're going to ask?
I'd probably go the shorter term for Supervisor White, but I'll do whatever.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Good morning. Ray Brooks, resident. I'd like for you, the board, to consider me for the position that was vacated by Kurt McCullough. I've been a resident here since 2011, and if I were appointed to the board, I would assure all that I would make all of my decisions, keeping in mind the best interest of not only the residents, but also the businesses, which sometimes we forget to take into consideration, and also with Tanglewood, which is also part of the district. My career, I was in retailing for 30 some odd years. I've never been on a board, but I certainly would look forward to the challenge of being on the board. And Sun and Lake is my home, and I certainly want to see Sun and Lake grow and prosper. And that's why I'd like for you to consider me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. Now, for the audience, I'm going to read the resolution, the first one, and there'll be time there for public comment. So, I'm going to wait till after each resolution for public comment. Resolution number 20170922-54. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to appoint a new supervisor to fill the seat vacated by Larry White for the remainder of his term pursuant to Section 9, 107 Highlands County ordinances. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, just to let the supervisors know, this Larry White's seat is a landowner seat. The, the landowner's seat will be up for reelection on, in January, at the January Landowners Meeting. There is, unlike the popular elected seat for Mr. McCullough, there is no requirement that the board fill this seat. You know, we can, technically, you could wait, have, and not appoint anyone, just wait until the January election. But just to, that's the way the, the ordinance reads. It's a may, not a shall. The popularly elected seat held by Mr. McCullough is a shall, and it has to be filled. So, just to let you know.
Can I have a motion for a candidate?
I move we appoint Dan Stegall to Larry White's seat.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comment here?
No.
Public comment? Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dan.
Congratulations, Dan. Tanya, do we swear him in first, or do we wait?
We'll wait at the same time.
Okay. Resolution number 2017092255. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to appoint a new supervisor to fill the seat vacated by Curtis McCullough for the remainder of his term pursuant to Section 9, 107 Highlands County ordinances.
Motion to accept.
Second.
And as, as I just said, this, we have to fill this seat, this requirement under the, the ordinances, and it'll be till 2021, till 2021, January 2nd of 2021. And this has to be filled within the 45-day window, correct?
You guys got any? Public comment?
Need a nomination.
Oh, yeah. I need a nomination. Sorry.
I move we appoint Ray Brooks.
Any discussion? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Congratulations, Ray. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Mr. Stegall? What we'd like to do now is, we'd like to, Chrissy is going to read an oath of office for you, and if you want to come, if you want to come to the mic, we'll, thank you.
I only have one. Yeah, that's me, too. Yeah, I'm just going to say that. You should do, can you read? Yeah. Now, don't say Ray Brooks. Just say William Stegall.
Are you ready, sir?
Right. You're just going to read after, that's so you can follow what I said.
I, William Stegall.
I, William Stegall.
A citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America.
A citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America.
And being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Florida.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties entrusted to me.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties entrusted to me.
While in office as supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
While in office as supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law.
And will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Can I say?
I'll pick up now. Thank you. If you will sign this for me, right there. Thank you, sir. Now, don't say his name, because I'm reading yours. There you go. Are you ready?
Yeah.
I, Raymond Brooks.
I, Raymond Brooks.
A citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America.
A citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America.
And being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And being an officer of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties entrusted to me.
And that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties entrusted to me.
While in office as supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
While in office as supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District Board of Supervisors.
And will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law.
And will not neglect any duty imposed upon me by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
I have one. I, I'd like to just talk about our, our summer help.
Thank you.
All the extra projects we got done because we got summer help this year. We painted on the list stations. We painted, painted the, the water tanks in, inside and outside the buildings. We didn't paint the water tanks with our summer help, but we did paint all the buildings, all, all the equipment, which hadn't, haven't been painted in years and years. George, George was able also to do extra projects of clearing the easements and stuff, which we haven't been able to get to. So, though, though, with the two, two people we had this year was a, a great help, and I hope we continue to bring summer help in. We're working on, a lot on drainage also, handwork that they've done. So, I just, Michael asked me a few weeks ago about this summer help, so I just wanted to report that it was, the people we hired were, were very, very good employees, so.
Tanya, can I ask you a question? Since he has so much damage out there, if we could or look to assess, do a special assessment, could we, could that all be dedicated specifically to the cleanup? I mean, that would be the purpose, I think, of having a, a special assessment is to clean up. So, the drainage and, and the cleaning up of the streets and the trees that, you know, I know there's a concern there, because we're just entering the new budget, and we clearly didn't plan for this type of devastation.
Correct.
Is that something that we could directly apply to his organization?
It, it can be applied, yes. A special assessment, if it's for the entire community, I believe it has to be specifically for a, a, you know, whether it's a road, whether it's, you know, it has to be specific, as far as a special assessment goes. But before we, you know, talk about special assessments, let us get our, our ducks in a row, first day, with FEMA. FEMA representative will be here in two weeks. We are in contact with him. He is with the state of Florida. And we want to find out, from a reimbursement level, where we stand as a government. So, that's number one. And until we know where we are with FEMA, I think, you know, before we go down the road of a special assessment, I think it's, it's going to be advisable for us to find out where we stand, and where, what kind of funds that we can receive from FEMA as a reimbursement.
And I clearly agree with that.
Yes.
And hopefully FEMA will be, you know, very proactive in this, and I don't know how quickly they work, or how slow they work. I know there's some things that are urgent out there right now, and so, as long as this is within a reasonable amount of time, so we can clean up the community, that's what I was kind of thinking about.
Yes, and I did find, through some research, that during 2004, I believe, there was a hurricane assessment charged to the, to the landowners here in the district.
Yeah, it's 50 bucks, right?
Was it 50?
Yeah.
Okay. I remember seeing that. So, so there, that has happened in the past. But let us keep working behind the scenes with FEMA and insurance, and I'll, I should have better answers by the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Daniel? Omar?
Supervisor Jim should be here shortly, okay? I just want to, Jim should be here shortly. He'd, he'd like to give a report. Do you want to, go ahead?
Unfortunately, I don't have a lot. Our offices were shut down until Tuesday this week for lack of power. The foreclosure report and litigation report, we'll get to you as soon as possible. It'll probably, it'll be before next Friday. We'll get, get you those updated reports. But other than that, there's not a, there's not a whole lot that I have to report.
Okay. General managers' report?
I just want to say thank you to the staff. Thank you, Mark, for your comments. It has been a challenging week and a half. That's all I can say for my staff. I felt like I couldn't sleep until all of our facilities were on electricity. That's just me. But we, we had electrical damage at our wastewater treatment plant on Florida Avenue. You know, after receiving electricity, we realized that we could not run on the electricity because of a transformer, so we had some major repairs there. Let's talk about FEMA a minute. Our, we don't have an answer yet on what we can do with Deer Run. We have reached out to different municipalities that own golf courses. We've reached out to our FEMA representative, and our question is, can we be reimbursed by FEMA for a public golf course debris removal? We don't have an answer yet, and we hope to have something today or Monday. Deer Run, it could be significant amount of costs. We counted, we had a vendor come in to take a tour of the Deer Run course yesterday. We have 87 trees that meet the criteria under FEMA for reimbursement. So, Omar was out there, Drew was out there. The vendor is Phillips and Jordan. This vendor is the, is, has a agreement with the county for debris, emergency debris removal, and they, the company that, the division that we met with yesterday was out of Wesley Chapel. So, I want to give you an update on that. The, the company, the debris removal company is not here in the district yet. Ross Macbeth with the county is preparing a, there's some sort of a, a document that we would need to sign before those trucks can be mobilized here in Sun and Lake. And that's because we are a special district. I don't have a copy of it yet. Phillips and Jordan don't have it, they don't have a copy yet, so we will not see those trucks here in the district picking up debris. The county will be picking up the debris all over the county, including Sun and Lake, including all the municipalities. So, that, that debris removal contract, we will not be responsible for any payment to the county or reimbursement. County is taking care of it all. So, as soon as I have that document in my hand, I will sign off on that, and then we will see those trucks mobilized here to pick up our debris. Hoping today or Monday. So, we're waiting on Ross Macbeth. So, I found out this morning. But going, going back to FEMA and insurance, insurance does not cover our debris removal. That's on any of our, our roads and our golf courses. So, as soon as we have an answer with FEMA, I believe the requirements of FEMA, as we understand, it's going to require three quotes. Even in emergency situations, I do have the ability to approve a vendor, but under FEMA, we are going to have to get three quotes to remove the, in the back nine is the nine I'm talking about, especially on deer. But during the tour, I think y'all went the full 18 holes yesterday. So, as soon as I have an answer, I'll let y'all know. But the procedure there is three quotes that we'll need to receive. We're concerned about the damage that the equipment could cause to the course. Very concerned about that, too. So, you know, right now, you know, Jim, Jim and I have discussed it in length, so as soon, like I said, as soon as we have some answers, we'll let you know. Insurance coverage, we have a few items, I believe, damaged that we are going to submit through insurance. One of the major areas that we have, we have a road washout on Arvita Avenue, which is not a main road, but it's a, it's a, one of the side roads to Florida Hospital. So, that is a complete washout, and we're looking at getting that repaired as soon as we're possible, and we're working on three quotes for that as well. I submitted a damage assessment report to the three of you, and the other two, I'll have that to you today. And that was prepared by Polston Engineering. So, we didn't have any major infrastructure damage as far as our buildings. We've had a little bit of roof damage in certain areas, a leak in the community center, minor, minor in comparison to what it really could have been. And we met with Craig A. Smith, that's the engineering firm that's handling the electrical upgrades at the water plant, they are finished with the electrical plans, and we're ready to start the process of getting that out for bid. So we met, they presented those to us yesterday. And the last project I have is the Edgewater Lift Station Rehabilitation, that's planned to start on Monday, and they will finish by Friday. Okay? That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Hi, my name is Charles Heek, I recently moved here about a year ago, I live off of forty-eight oh five Bobadilla Avenue. My main complaint has been, since I moved into property, I was told about the easement...
Oh, closer, thank you.
My main concern is about the easement along, the road along, um, Bobadilla. It's completely flooded, they told me they were going to install some drainage, I have about three, um, what do you call it, acres of land on the side of me, that it's not being used at the moment, and they said, uh, they were going to install, what's it called, like the drainage pipes or something, because the whole entire street just keeps flooding completely. Even before the storm, I filed complaints numerous times, they told me they're going to come out, check it, and nothing has been done. I've also been told there needs to be an increase in the budget before they could do anything, so now I want to know where do we stand with our drainage areas along the homes, because it's damaging the entire property.
The area that he's talking about is in our plan for next year to fix the drainage in this area. People have to understand, we've got a lot of rain, we've got, you know, ten inches of rain. He does live in a bad area, there's a, there's a, another lady in the audience who lives across the street from him. We've done, we've been over there two or three, uh, times to try to fix it, we just can't move the water because of the way it's designed, it's got to be a different design. And, I mean, he's absolutely right, um, but that isn't our plan for next year in that area.
Okay.
Michael, next year being 2018?
Yeah. This year's budget, what...
Yes, this year's budget, 2017, 18.
Exactly.
Okay.
To try to answer your question, we've, uh, this board, I'm part of it, me, put it me, because I'm not sure, uh, the last two years, we spent a substantial amount of money on drainage, and we have a list, and if you're on the list, I promise you, we'll...
That is on our list.
Take care of it.
You know, and I feel bad for the people that, that come in here, but, you know, we're trying to, you know, we can't fix everything yesterday.
Well, I understand you guys can't fix everything yesterday, but for the amount of money that we're spending, six seventy-five a year, the pool's not included, the gym's not included, I want to know, what are you guys doing? You guys say you guys spray for mosquitoes, I don't see the mosquitoes getting sprayed. The last time you guys were around my property was a month and a half ago, and I filed also a complaint with that. So I want to know, when do you guys often come out? Because right now I'm on disability, so I just come in pretty often.
We, um, we spray about twenty hours a week, um, we do two different areas, we do Tanglewood, and we also do, uh, the Sun 'n Lake area. We were out last night, and I went by your house last night, so maybe you're not out, but I know it was...
I've been out all last night, I walked, I never heard of it.
Well, I know it was by last night because I was actually, I know who did it, it was Chewie, so, you know, I mean, you know, you may miss it, but we are, we are trying to do the whole area.
Okay, and then when is the plan, do you estimate for the flooding area? Because when I first purchased the property on, around this area, I was told six months, that's when I purchased.
Well, I don't know who told you, I don't know...
That was between the real estate and...
I don't know, well, the real estate... Agent might have told you that, but we didn't tell you that, you know, because I knew that, that, that that was not on our radar through this year.
Well, it should suffice to say that you're going to work on that this year, so I think that's kind of the answer. Uh, I know it's not tomorrow, and it's an unfortunate circumstance, but if they say it's, it's part of the project, you know, I'm, I'm basing it on what Michael's saying, and it's his organization, so...
Right, I just hope to see some kind of improvement for the amount of money that you spend.
Sure.
Especially, I just built my land here, and I just built the home, I expect to see certain things done, not, just seeing, I put Spencer Grass down, my whole entire grass, I replaced already twice, and it's been completely destroyed already, and this is not because of the hurricane, this is just regular rainfalls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Susie Johnson, resident since oh-four on Bobadilla. Uh, it is horrible, the water sanding, the grass, and Mike is right, he has been by there, and when I first moved here, there was, my association fees was a certain amount. It has already gone up by three hundred dollars, and I don't see what I'm getting for the association fees that I'm paying. When I first moved here, um, this swimming pool was part of it, the golf course was a certain amount, there were certain things that you felt that you got within a community. Right now, my property looks awful, the grass is awful, I don't know about the spraying either, because I did, I don't hear trucks like I used to hear them. I don't think it's my responsibility to even go to the district office and to pick up pellets to put in the water. The area is horrible, I don't know if you have come by there to even see it, it is horrible. My neighbor let me use his pump to drain out over into an empty lot next to my home to drain that water out. Come see my home, come look at that, I, I, I'm not going to replace the, the grass. Uh, Mike, I talked to Mike, and hopefully there will be something within the budget to replace that horrible grass that is now there, it's horrible. And, and I'm hoping that, I've always enjoyed living in Sun 'n Lakes, I don't mind paying additional assessment fees if I can see what I'm getting out of it, and right now, I'm not getting anything out of it, I do not mind paying it, I've, it's gone up anyway, and you've taken certain things away from people that were fortunate to have these particular, I don't know what you call, amenities when they first moved here. We no longer have them, we have to pay for membership for the gym, membership for the swimming pool, extra money for golfing, not a problem. I just would like to see what my association fees are paying for, and I would like to feel that I am a part of the community, and Mike knows, Mike, don't be sitting back, you...
No, no.
It's horrible, it is horrible, please, I don't, I don't know if you go by and, and you're driving...
What is your address, ma'am?
I beg your pardon?
What's your address?
Forty-eight oh eight.
Forty-eight oh eight?
And, and I retired in 2015 from the college, I am not as up on the budget and everything, but believe me, since I retired, I plan on getting involved and to understand your budget, uh, what's going on and that type of thing. I appreciate you listening to me, but I just really would like to see something happen with that grass, because it's, it's an easement, you know, I, just, just help us to understand how Bobadilla, we're in the back, we're in the boonies, um, but just help us to understand what you, you all plan on doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
That's where, that's where you live, yeah.
Tom Costi, resident. The comments about, uh, a special assessment for storm cleanup, um, brings to mind that back when we had the one in 2004 of fifty dollars per, per resident, uh, the district's coffers were practically bare. We had very little cash in, in our reserves, and it was absolutely necessary that there be a special assessment. Uh, today, we've got considerable cash in reserves, and I'd like to ask if, Omar, can you tell me, undesignated reserves, undesignated reserves of the district, counting all funds, what's the total?
We can research it, Tom, we don't have that information.
It's, I believe it's in the millions, well into the millions. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that a government keep somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five percent of their annual budget in undesignated reserves. There's a considerable thought that anything more than that could be considered hoarding cash, hoarding money. People who are watchdogs for excessive taxation will normally object to an accumulation of un, unappropriate amounts of money in undesignated reserves. And I believe we've got several millions in undesignated reserves, which we access for many different things whenever we feel like it, we've even actually been told by our attorney that we can use those reserves for anything we want. And if they're undesignated, it's beyond me why we would tap the community, the landowners, for cash for cleanup of a storm like this when we've got millions of dollars in undesignated reserves, with no specific plan for their use. So I just think that needs to be kept in mind and fully explained, not only to the residents, but all the owners, all the stakeholders in Sun 'n Lake, before we go forward with any kind of a arbitrary, um, assessment for storm cleanup. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Bill Nocroce, resident, glad to see, uh, the people in the audience are, it's more populated today than it has been for quite a while. Uh, what I would like to do is just congratulate the, uh, appointed board, uh, and their responsibility to the community, which is, um, very important, because we have people coming up with various problems, and, uh, I hope that, uh, the new board members will take seriously the requests from people that have, they're having problems, and not having this drainage problem over and over and over again. And also to try to reduce or stop the, uh, expensive do-overs that we have here. There's a lot of problems that have been resolved, but they have to be redo, redone over and over again because they haven't been planned on, whether it be a restaurant that was underutilized, now was utilized, and now we have to buy and go to a very expensive thing. And that, like, I also want to congratulate people who did run for the, the board, because it's very important that, and it's, you know, it's a, it's a, a commitment, it's important commitment to get up there and be able to represent the community. And, is it Shirley? Shirley, I want to thank you very much for putting your name out there, I hope it, uh, comes up again, you have very, uh, good qualifications, there are other people here too, and I wish they would run for the board. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Next?
Morning, my name is Greg Turck, I'm a resident here, been here for several years, speaking on behalf of my son who lives at thirty-six oh eight Manor Drive. And I'm just going to ditto some of the comments that were made regarding, uh, drainage situations, I don't know if it's, his is any worse than the young lady's over here, or the first speakers. Mike has been very helpful in trying to alleviate the situation, but it's at thirty-six twenty-four Manor Drive, where there is a catch basin that is full, that's been full since prior to the hurricane. You need to get this man the equipment that he needs to operate with, okay? That means if he can't purchase it, and if there are no monies to be able to, to buy large items to resolve, uh, drainage issues, and I'm speaking particularly of an item like a jetback that will get in these neighborhoods, clean out your basins that have been neglected for years. I've walked around on Sunrise Drive, I've seen dirt and mud and grass growing out of catch basins. You need to get him, you need to get him either the money or the equipment in order to be able to function. I've, I've spoken to Mike, uh, he's doing what he can, but he's working like a one-armed paper hanger. Regards to FEMA, I've been a public works director in South Florida for twenty-five years, retired up here, I love the area, nice and quiet, okay? And your administrator is going to be up against the tide when she's dealing with FEMA. We've dealt with FEMA, you, you're going to be dealing with FEMA for years, believe me when I say that, because the, the, the damage and destruction that we experienced since nineteen ninety-two, that series of hurricanes, from Hurricane Andrew and till the three or four that you were hit, Criss Cross Sebring back in, I think, two thousand and six, okay? You're going to be dealing with maze of, of, of paperwork, they're going to come back, they're going to deny and deny and deny, okay? So, request that you get this young lady some help, that, that is intimately familiar with FEMA and their regulations, so that they can get through the maze of what she's going to have to deal with and let her go on with being the district, district administrator, that's number one. In terms of a special assessment, Tom brought up a good point, if there is money, please use that to restore the area. FEMA's not going to come up with money ASAP, I will tell you that. They will withhold the funds, your golf course may be, may not be able to do that, you may need to increase greens fees. But you need to, you need to, to look at this situation, do it on, on the basis of having the right equipment, having the money, spending that money, resolving some of those drainage issues, and I think they can be resolved very simply through either swell reconfiguration or cleaning out your catch basins that are here, finding them first and then cleaning them out. Thank you very much.
Excuse, excuse me, is, hello, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I might have missed it, is your name, did you say it was Rex?
No, Greg, Greg.
Oh, Ray.
Greg.
Ray. And you're, okay, I'm, I just, okay, I'm confused here for a second, and, and you need to help me on this, I don't know, are you related to Roger Hood?
No.
And you're at Manor Drive?
My son lives at, uh, Manor Drive, thirty-six oh eight, and the catch basin is thirty-six twenty-four, correct.
And I, the only reason I say that, and I was making the clarification, I've been kind of chasing an email that I, I received from Roger Hood, and I went down to take some pictures of the, of the, what was written up as far as the damages, so that I could get to the district and, and, and kind of bring this a little bit to their attention, because, you know, clearly it's their responsibility. So I was around, driving around yesterday, but I was told to go to twenty-eight oh nine Monza, and then I went to twenty-eight oh nine Monza for this whole email trail that I had.
No.
So you, you no relationship to them?
No, never, not even close.
No, this is a, this is a different one.
No, this one is really borders on a...
Are you couple houses down from Tom Costi?
The one I'm talking about really borders on a health hazard right now, because you've got catpools that are about two inches long that have since been breeding, which shows you that it's previous to the storm.
I got walking catfish.
He had walking catfish, four of them there, yeah. Thank you.
Come back up, you got something.
Who would he send on the emails for, like, all the water that we had collected? Like, I have multiple pictures, so I want to know, who can I send it to on the board to show the damages that it has caused from the water settling for weeks and weeks? Is there, like, in...
You need to send it to Mr. Hurley.
Where do we get the emails from?
I live at forty-five hundred...
Do you give it to me? Okay.
I live at forty-five hundred Bobadilla.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it'd be pretty easy for me to come down and, uh, talk to you about what you're...
All right, that works even better.
I'm sorry?
I said that works even better.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Shirley Schumanalegre, um, I wanted to just address a couple of the, the...
Shirley Schumanalegre, I wanted to just address a couple of the comments regarding the reserves, as well as regarding the special assessment, and I think the attorney may be able to assist in being able to answer the question. But number one, I do think the district needs to have reserves. It's extremely important to have reserves. Obviously, we never know, you know, for an emergency. I do think you're right, though, that it needs to be substantiated, the amount of reserves that should be maintained. One of the things that I've discussed before is, and I had an individual discussion with each of you when interviewing, was that the capital improvement plan is extremely important, as well as a strategic plan, and I'm talking about per departments. Mike has alluded, and I'm sure he has a plan. I think that some of that information would be extremely helpful to get out to the public so that they do know that the district is working on it. I don't disagree with the fact that we may need more resources, excuse me, to address some of the issues that are there, and I hope that'll be taken into consideration as you look at the capital improvement plan and strategic plan. And absolutely, I hope it is a plan that is adopted by the board for the future, not just something where the conversations had with Tanya or someone, because I know you all individually have to have those conversations, but I hope it's adopted by the board so that it's a working document. I hope every year you come back, you revisit those plans, so that you're going to be addressing what the immediate needs are, as well as the needs of the rest of the constituency. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Jim, we passed you a little while ago.
Thank you. I apologize for being late or, you know, being detained out on the golf course. We have a big project on Deer Run today that we have about 20 people working on, so we want to make sure that goes well. Just wanted to recognize my team. I know, really, as I've looked around the district and everybody, the residents, has really come together, which is what you'd expect with the hurricane. Kevin Heim and Mike Lemire, in one day, turned our slow season into our busy season, serving over 300 people a day, which is probably the best meals we've ever served. You could really see that people needed to get in out of the heat without having electric and, you know, it made, made it, made you feel like it really mattered. So the team did a great job. I think you're all aware, you've seen our, as our superintendent said, our pretty-boy golf pros out cutting trees and getting their hands dirty and actually showing some people some team spirit, but they've really moved along on the front nine of Deer Run at a pace we didn't, didn't expect, so that was great. And obviously, the heavy lifting is falling on Ramon's crew. We did have the meeting last week with the executives from Casper and some of the, some of the board members to go over our plans for the summer and into the season, and also look forward to. I believe we're going to have a workshop coming up, so I think that'll be great. My number-one action plan for my business plan this year is communication with the membership and the board and to work on that, to make that more seamless. Our upcoming, we've got some capital work that we're just finishing up that was delayed by Irma. The bridge on Turtle Run that Mike's spearheading got backed up till next week. They'll start on number 14 of Turtle Run, redoing that entire bridge since the back is closed next week. We've got the beer taps for the end of the bar scheduled for Tuesday, and we're finishing up just having some snags with the scoreboard and getting the right type of corkboard. Beyond that, we opened up the back nine of Turtle Run to play twice, really considering the hurricane and everything. It's really in excellent shape. Unfortunately, we've had to cancel some events that we had that were on the books. We had two major high school events, the Crutchfield-Hawkins events that bring high school teams in from around the state, but everybody understands that, you know, hurricane is something nobody controls. We had a VFW tournament on September 30th that we backed up to October the 14th. We're really trying to approach the course with urgency, but we don't want to sacrifice any type of long-term plan to do anything and get people on the golf course. We are working with Tanya and trying to define what FEMA will do, because it is odd. I called one of my friends that has run the Fort Myers City courses. When Charlie went through their course, you know, they weren't able to get any money from FEMA. And then there's one or two other places that we think, or one place that we think might have, so, which is actually Billy Casper managed. So we've got calls into them to try to understand how they were able to secure some funding. Specifically, on Tuesday, we did sodding work primarily on number five and number six green on Turtle Run. That's, that's gone very well. We're on Deer Run today. Our stay-in-play package is progressing nicely, basically contacting the people that have contacted me who haven't been here before to give them the first opportunity at booking the units, and then moving, then we'll move on to the people that have been here in the past, working diligently to try to get another unit for the January, February, March block. That's where the, the major, the major push is, and I've contacted, trying to think, oh, the Lovett's, Will and Rachel Lovett, they're the ones who are handling the fourplex on Deer Run. They're on number nine. So they've actually rented two of those units for annual rentals, and I'm trying to convince them to make one or two of the other units into a seasonal. So that's ongoing. We're working with our club sponsors to, you know, to make sure that they get all the value out of their sponsorship that they can. A new major sponsor is Allstate Jessica Heartline, and Tenille's helping me quite a bit with that, because she's right here in the community, so we involved her in, we're going to involve her in Dash and Die, and then we involved her in other events to get, to get her to have a better exposure. Bargain Carts, we work with them, and we're actually starting a program where we give a gift certificate in the restaurant for anybody who buys a cart from now till the end of the year with Bargain Carts. Ridge Real Estate has always, you know, been there from the beginning, and we work with them to refer everyone. And William Albertron at Heartland Bank has been there from the beginning, too, and a big supporter. Beyond that, one of the things I wanted to address with the board specifically is just, we're working hard on our policies and procedures manual, and one of the, probably the most important aspect of that is drilling down on our membership classifications. Specifically, the membership classification that's probably not as tight as it should be is our definition of a family. Right now, our definition of a family is two people that live together and are in a relationship, and they live together here when they're at Sun and Lake. There's a number of definitions out there that, that would be more restrictive, that I think could be appropriate, but what I want to ask the board today is to, is to get their approval to actually, this year for the 2017-18 year, use the same qualifications or classifications that we did last year. And then what I'd really like to do is to work to drill this down, I would say, by the end of December. So if we do tighten these qualifications, that the members that'll be affected will have, you know, quite a bit of time to plan between now and then next October, where they'd have to make a decision. So if someone was a family membership now and they were going to have to take out two single memberships to get the same privileges, it's quite a difference in cost. So I think it would be good if we could give them a number of months to think about that and consider it, as opposed to looking at something now. Not sure, do I need to have a motion for that in any way, or do I just take a verbal feel from the supervisors, David, about how that would work?
We want to get a consensus for him to move forward, not actually, you know, he's just basically asking for direction, as far as if that's something you want him to undertake or if you want him to leave the, you know, the family membership as it's currently defined. I mean, if you-
I don't, I don't mind that, but to get a consensus, but I want the guys to have something to say before we do-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anything that he comes up with, he'll, you know, will be brought to the board for approval. He's just saying, he doesn't want to waste his time if you don't want him to look into that.
Okay. Well, I think I'll just-
Is that a-
If I can, Jim, how many people are we talking about? And that'd be my first question. My second question is, why wasn't this resolved two months ago? I mean, I thought, I sat in the audience, and we went through all this stuff about memberships, et cetera, et cetera, and I don't understand why it wasn't resolved already. I mean, I thought this was a dead issue, we were done.
I don't know the correct answer to that, other than I think it is resolved until we change our classifications that we have now. So, I mean, we're currently operating under the same, you know, a family membership is two people that live together here while they're in Sun and Lake that are in a, in a relationship. The only exception that we have to that are the two sisters last year that we, you know, grandfathered for last year that we'll have to look at this year that have been members for the last six years. If we're planning on changing it, then we, then we need to change it. It would have been better if we changed it earlier. Is that correct?
Do I understand correctly what you're saying, is keep it as it is, but change it possibly next year, but give them nine months' notice?
Yes, yes, to do, and actually, if we did it in December, yeah, it would be nine months' notice, exactly.
That makes sense to me.
Anybody else got something? Ma'am? Ma'am, we, we'll get to you, okay? Jim, a raised question, how many is this going to affect?
I specifically don't, don't know.
If the requirement stays where it is, and it says the two people have to reside together, period, then the only people that are in question would be the two sisters, is that a true statement?
Correct. That's correct, yeah.
We've got rid of all the couples that didn't live together?
Yes, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of ways you can define a definition of, of a couple, and then I don't know how you expand it and get into details of how many months, you know, we have some couples that reside together here during the winter and then live, at least I know, I've been told, there's one couple that does that. So I don't know how you write a definition. I mean, I'd be looking to David to write a definition that says they have to live together six months or eight months or, you know, this is obviously a sticky wicket. If it was easy, it would have been done. When we, when we started the policies and procedures, we pulled in six or eight policies or procedures from municipalities and other clubs, and it was really wonderful, but not one of them agreed. You know, there was not one of the six that had the same definition. So there is not a standard definition out there, and hence, Mr. Brooks, that's the problem, is that we have our current definition, and that's basically what we're going to follow until we get a new one.
If that's the case, then what are you asking us to do?
I'm asking you to approve that we continue to do that and that we commit to, if we're going to change that definition, doing it by December, so that we can give the people who it will affect time to make plans.
If I'm understanding Jim correctly, I think basically what he's asking is, is, do you guys want him to move forward with changing the definition of family? Are you happy with leaving it the way it is, so he doesn't have to? I mean, if you're happy with the way it is, there's no reason for him to consult me and us to sit down and try and figure out how to best define a family. But if you, obviously, there's, there's some issues out there with at least some of the members, it sounds like, that may, or may not fit with the current definition of family. Do we want to try and resolve those issues or just leave it defined as it is now?
Well, I, again, I may be missing the boat on this, but I thought you were coming, you were going to give us a policy for the golf club, is that correct? Which would include a lot of things that I think Mr. Camp gave everybody a list of things that he thought should be part of the policy book?
Yeah, but we didn't address all of them.
Oh, we didn't address them? No. Okay. So you're just working on pieces of it?
Well, I think the simple answer, basically, the way that I look at everything, is that, you know, usually you have 100 points and 98 of them everybody agrees on, and then you have two that are contentious points. So, you know, it's pretty easy to talk about tee times and dress codes and those things and not need the direction of the board, but, you know, a membership issue, a membership classification, in my mind, is a, is a board issue. It's not, not a Casper-driven issue. If I get eight different policies and procedures from other clubs and all eight are different, it's pretty hard for me to tell the board what to do. I think it's really the board's decision to tell us, I mean, that's the number-one thing at a club.
Yeah, but it would also help to have it, I mean, I should be able to see it. Dan and I, for example, I don't know what it even looks like. I like to see what it is currently, and then I can look at it and intelligently give you a decision if I think it's okay or if I think we need to change it.
Well, I can definitely get you all the, you know, the eight different options that we got from the other policies and procedures by the next meeting, so we would be prepared to have in-depth discussions, and then by December, we'd have, have it finalized.
Unless somebody on this board has an objection, I would propose that the existing definition is sufficient. I'm not sure it's for us to question how many months a year people live together. That, to me, is ludicrous. So as long as we've taken care of the exceptions that existed, and I assume the sisters had some kind of notice last year that they were being permitted this year, but not necessarily going forward, is that a true statement?
Yes, we just told them they were grandfathered last year. We didn't tell them how this year would be handled. We didn't say whether they would be allowed or not allowed. That would be something we would want to decide.
And I'm not sure we want to spend our time blowing over eight different definitions based on what. So I, that's my opinion.
They need to come up, if I can interject. The whole, the whole way, what, what is driving this policies and procedures is there are policies and procedures out there today. They're in a dozen different spots. The initial meeting was, let's try to put all of these in one single spot. So if anybody has a question, be it medically, be it a single, be it handicap, like, whatever it happens to pertain to, as it pertains to golf operations, they wouldn't be going necessarily to Jim, they wouldn't necessarily be going to Andy, they would be able to go to a single point and it would be defined. One of the sticky pieces in it is, in the past, previous people had granted special dispensation to people out there. They had special memberships. So it's pretty easy to define a single membership. One of the parts that was really tough to define was a family membership. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of people that are affected by that, but there are a lot of people that tried to take advantage of that. You don't even have to live in the same household and you are, can be considered a family. You can be in two houses. So all they were trying to do is narrow this down. Unfortunately, it isn't in place at this point in time where Jim has to get his operations up, he has to have people sign up for family memberships or whatever, and he just wants to have the flexibility to do it as we did it in the past, and let's look at however it's defined, whether it stays exactly the same to what you're saying, Joe, but let's give him the ability to go forward for this year and, as if nothing happened, as if there's no question on family memberships, and let's work on a, that part of the policy or the procedure that will be then published for next year's membership to be able to read. What I, I think is a little bit of a concern and a push is to say, have it done by December. It might be able to be done by December, but then I will follow up with what Ray, Ray said. What Ray said. I think that if, Andy has already put something together. So I think the key is, let Andy, or I'll even print the things out, we'll, we'll have a discussion, everybody will have that in front of them sometime in the next couple of meetings, whatever, whatever you decide on. You look at it and you say, I agree with this, I disagree with this, and kind of have it as a working document process so that it can be published in a timely fashion. I'm not sure it'll be done by December, but I'm not so sure why that has to be done by December, okay? But we have now all the published rates, we have guidelines on that, and that's what we're going to stick to. So in my opinion, in a nutshell, let's go forward with the way it has been for this year, and then we'll develop what we need as far as procedure. That would be my, my thought process.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to come up? Ma'am, would you like to come up? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Rick Holbert, uh, we've got a little sticky wicket here. What are you gonna do about people that, um, are living together, that are not husband and wife, but are doing it because of convenience of, say, retirement plans, social security, whatever, and yet, they're considered, you know, husband and wife?
Part of the definition.
You know, I mean, that, they're not family, but they are, okay? Everybody calls them, you know, so where, where are you gonna go from there? So, you got a little bit of a, a problem there, okay?
Yeah, we're, we're.
We, we agree with that, and that's why it hasn't happened as of today. You're absolutely one-hundred percent correct.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Rick.
You know, that, that seems to be, where do we go? You know, it's a, it's a big circle.
And that will be presented to the board at some future date, and if they agree with it, fine, if they don't agree with it, that's fine, too. I mean, that's, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, you, you don't wanna tick some of these people off, you know?
Absolutely.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, uh, Dave or Ted, you, what, we just take a consensus, or?
No, I think based on that discussion, we know what we're, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna stay as it is right now, and then whenever the new policy, we'll, we'll get it done as quickly as we can, and if we, if, if Jim feels that it's imperative that we make a decision by December, for whatever reason, we'll see if we can get that, get that done, but.
I think the most important thing is to get a decision.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And I only picked a date to, to actually have a time, so we don't end up in the same situation again, where, where time passes and we haven't addressed it.
What are we doing, what are we doing with the two sisters this year, this coming year?
That was my exact question. I think we need to make a decision, in my mind, whether we either don't allow them this year, we allow them this year, and it's the last year, or they're grandfathered as long as they'd like to be members, um, but not, not to do it again where it's a year at a time. We really should have a clear direction once we decide on them this year.
Uh, Jim, I think you oughta tell them what maybe you should've last year, is they got it this year, but they might not next year. Instead of just saying you're grandfathered.
Okay.
Because I, I don't think we wanna discuss now.
Okay, so we can just, when we're handling it in December, if we wanna call it that, we can address that at the same time.
But you make sure you tell them.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll send them a letter and copy the board.
No, tell them, not a letter, a letter and a phone call.
Yeah, maybe a phone call, too.
Sure, oh, for sure. The only other things that I have are just, uh, just to go over a schedule of the course closings and openings, as we are projecting. This coming Monday, the back nine of Turtle will close, uh, and be airified, and we'll do that bridge work. At the same time, we'll open the front nine of Turtle, uh, with the exception slash caveat that the sixth hole will remain closed because of the sod work on it, and what we'll do is, we'll turn the eighteenth hole of Turtle Run into a par-three, so people will still play nine holes, and they'll still, you know, play it in an order. And, uh, then, basically, on October the first, we're expecting to be able to open all three nines, so the entire Turtle Golf Course, with the exception of number six, and then the front nine of Deer Run. So, on Turtle, what we'll do is, we'll either, you know, we'll do shotgun starts, and people who want to play eighteen holes will play their starting hole twice, that's how they'll get eighteen holes. Other people will just choose to skip six, and we'll tell them to take birdie, to make them happier, um, but they'll skip number six and play it that way. Beyond that, the back nine of Deer Run, I think, is a little too early, you know, to project. I think we definitely will have it open by, by November first, and I, I would like to have it open by the middle of October, um, but a lot of that is just going to have to do with how it works with, with FEMA, um, whether we're doing most of it on our own, and then getting, you know, a local contractor, because my, my plan would be, if we don't get any help from FEMA, is to have our crews do, you know, all of the small work. Most of the big work is off the fairway, um, you know, tape that with yellow tape, and actually try to get quotes for like a December work, when it's very dry, all the price escalation is gone. I think that would be the best, you know, most efficient use of our money. From the bids I've seen, I think we can do it for well less than half, you know, maybe a third to a quarter of what these big companies that have lots of overhead and need to make a profit do.
Jim, can?
Yes, and I'm, yeah, any questions?
We're not holding off doing any starting work on the courses, or be it Deer, uh, waiting on an answer from FEMA, are we?
Well, what we've done is, you know, for Turtle Run, which, uh, you know, has smaller trees, different type of damage, and the way everything laid out, we just, just jumped into it and cleared everything, you know, right off the bat, um, because as we looked at it, you know, my experience, I hadn't ever heard of FEMA, you know, ever coming through with money. And now, the fact that we're a government, I think the fact that we're a government golf course is the only reason we have a chance. If we were just a, a private club, you know, I know there's no chance there, you need to, you need to have insurance coverage for your problems. A public course, I was never under the impression that you could get money, um, but I think it's different if it's a government district-type-owned course. But to specifically answer your question, we, we cleared Turtle without a lot of thought to it, as we've gotten to Deer and gotten deeper into the definitions of what they cover, you know, 'cause they cover trees that are four inches and bigger, cover limbs that are two inches and bigger. We've approached it at first, if something's a safety issue, do that immediately. Second, if it's around the playing area, oh, I'm sorry, first, if it's a safety issue, do that immediately. Second, if it's within twenty yards of the playing area, you know, then clean that up. And then, thirdly, to kinda look at the size of the tree, and decide whether it's something that FEMA might cover, or, or we would have to deal with. So, maybe to give you some specific examples, on number eight of Deer, unfortunately, the beautiful oak, just short of the green, um, went down, and we knew that that would be instrumental to us getting playback going, so we basically have taken all the limbs off of it, you know, as much as we can do, and have left the huge stump there. We'll put yellow tape around, you know, unless something happens, where FEMA's gonna pay for it, um, we'll put yellow tape around it, and then just have people play around it. With, with other situations, we just, most of the stuff luckily is out of play, so I don't think it's gonna delay our recovery, um, but I think, I guess the question I would have is, if we don't have a positive answer from FEMA by next Friday, or if we pick a certain date, then I think we have to just go forward in getting the course ready. Anything that's out of the way, we can wait on, um, but that would be good if we almost picked a date in the sand. What, what do you think about that, Tanya?
We're gonna have to pick a date. We can't just, we can't keep moving forward without an answer, so we will have to pick a date, but we're, we're very hopeful that we should hear something today or Monday.
And that was my only point. I mean, if we're waiting on an answer, and then, I, I was wondering if there was, was some way we can document this, so that we can show them. I mean, if you had a problem with your home, and the roof was off, and, you know, your insurance company didn't come out there right away, you started work right away, and as long as you documented it, then, you know, they'd say, yes, we can do something. And I'm just, I'm hoping we're not sitting and waiting to get an answer from FEMA, because as an agency, they're not the most, they're not the quickest, uh, so, that's why I was trying to get a feel for where, where we were, and if we were doing things, and documenting it, and, and, and hopes that we're gonna get coverage.
Right now, since there's enough work that we know FEMA definitely won't cover, that's what we're, that's what we're doing now, but we're gonna be very, it's very close to the point, I would say by, you know, Monday or Tuesday, you know, we're gonna get to that point, maybe Wednesday, where we have to make that decision. We are also, next week, I'm gonna, after the meeting, I'll talk to Mr. Branson, and, you know, reach out to the, the MGA, or, or the, anyone who wants to be involved with helping us with a very light cleanup. Our, our big challenge now, basically, is just, you know, getting the grass mowed with all the twigs and, you know, small branches, um, so that's something that we feel, we wouldn't wanna ever have a member operate a piece of equipment, or do anything of that, but if we could take our workforce that's cleaning up from five or seven people to fifteen or twenty people, um, we could kinda mow through the back nine and get all those twigs and branches picked up in two or three days, um, and start the mowing, mowing process, so that we can, you know, I would say, my goal is, is October the fourteenth, to hit, to hit that date, to open all thirty-six holes. Obviously, rain and other things have a lot to do with that.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim, I got one more question. As you know, uh, yesterday, I got a call from Herb Cowan.
Yes.
Uh, he called me, and I was golfing, so, and he didn't identify himself, but he just said he'd get back to me. He never got back to me. My question is, was he just notified that, that his, uh, membership, it wasn't gonna be the same?
No, no, this, I'd have to check with emails and phone calls, but it's been at least three or four months. I mean, when, when it immediately came up, we immediately contacted them, so it's been back since May.
That's good. I mean, I just, you know, forgetting the call right before the memberships are due, I, I wondered if he was notified, that's a.
No, we've been talking to him since May, in, in a lot of ways, to have him help us document, you know, the involvement, and better understand, you know, why, why, why the membership was granted.
Yeah, and let me just help Mike on this one, uh, since we can't talk prior to the meeting, I also got a call, just to let you know.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know he wanted to talk to, uh, me or Mark, 'cause of, or Mark or I, and we're the only two left that did that, so.
Correct.
Okay, I just was afraid that you didn't notify.
No, no, and I'm glad we cleared that up, but no, it's been, from the very beginning, when that was brought up, we contacted them, and I'll get an exact date, but I believe it was in May.
Very good, thank you. Is that done, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're going to, uh, board-to-board discussion. Anybody got anything? Mark?
Nope.
I have a few things. First of all, I just wanted to thank Shirley for running. I was very impressed with our conversation. I think you're very capable. I hope you stay involved, and, and one day, this happens for you, but I just wanted to tell you that, don't keep your head down, just keep it up, and, I just, I was glad I got to meet you, okay? Thank you. Uh, Joe, Kurt was on the committee with, um, Jim, and, uh, with the kitchen and the lanai, and I'd like you to serve on that, if you could.
That's fine.
Okay. And then Jim, you know, Joe. Uh, is there any, sorry, folks, about my voice. Is there any conversation, anybody wants to talk about the billboard? Or you wanna just leave it the way it is for now, it's tabled? This would be the, uh, electronic billboard that we tabled? Just leave it the same?
I think it's stayed tabled. I'm not interested in it.
And, uh, Mike, I talked to the guy on, uh, miles of drive, I got to meet him, he came, he came home while I, but his neighbor come over and talked to, it looked like we got a good drainage system there, but he said, something's not connected to make it run through, 'cause he showed me the dry ones, he showed me the wet ones, and it's kinda funny how some of them are dry. Now, he thinks they're clogged.
Mike? Um, I've, I've got so many phone calls in the last week for all kinds of drainage, and I was over there also, some of those, some of those catch basins go nowhere. They just catch basins, they let them fill up, and then they're supposed to drain, and I think that's one of them. Also, the gentleman that was here earlier, his son's house was the same exact thing. They don't go anywhere, so we have to, we have to starting to address, do we wanna fix these, uh, catch basins, and the drainage in that area? Absolutely, we should, you know, you know, it's just, uh, you know, finding a way to connect them all, there's gonna be a lot of work, we're gonna have to go back to people's homes, the easements, uh, move bushes and fences, and, and, you know, uh, so, I mean, it's a big, big job. Now, a lot of this has come up because of the storm, because it was humid rain.
And the water, I, I understand the water is exceptionally high.
Right, exactly, but it has to be addressed. We have to maintain it.
Right, so, uh, is, are you gonna have Drew look at that?
We, we, yes.
Are you gonna look at it?
We, we, yes.
We're gonna have to have a meeting, 'cause I, you know, our responsibility is drainage and maintenance, and then so, if, if we have water that is standing in the ditch, or moving in the ditch, is doing its job, as long as the water is not into the homes. Catch basins, that is an infrastructure issue. We, you know, at this time, we're not addressing, we, we can look at the design, I think we have a map of that area, but, you know, I, we just don't have any answers today, you know, what, what the issues are. I'd have to go out there and see them, 'cause this, today is the first day that I've heard of, of some of these issues today, so.
Okay, why just?
We can, we're gonna look into it and have a meeting.
Good, 'cause, you know, there might be something we have to address and put on them, you know, and get it fixed, but they're under the assumption that they're clogged up, and that's.
There are some clogged up, absolutely there are, but there are some that go nowhere.
Okay.
Okay.
But we will find out, right?
I would, actually, I'd like to get together with you, Tanya, maybe if Drew and Mike, maybe you and Mike initially, because going out into the back areas where a lot of that drainage has been cleaned up, it's flowing very, very well. I'm not saying that that will help the, the people on Mons or on Manor, uh, or Baba.
Boogamale, yeah.
However, I, I don't know that, I'm not an engineer, uh, but he's got water flowing in, in a lot of areas that is just, you know, it's incredible what it is, and that's why I said earlier, we need to put, we need to put some more effort into the infrastructure, into the drainage, and not just, you know, because of roads and, and, you know, special projects. We need to take some money and put it in there, and start cleaning out these areas that will get the water to flow better.
Drainage maintenance, that's our responsibility.
That's what I'm saying, and we, we don't do it.
And there's many nuisance flooding areas, okay, in the district, nuisance flooding, that's a, you know, definitely a different definition than flooding your home, okay? So, there's many areas in the district with nuisance, maintenance is our responsibility, yes it is, to see that the water's flowing, and, and when there's water in your ditches, it's doing its job, okay, I wanna say that. But we did not expect, you know, this kind of rainfall. I think, if anybody has those stats, I, I received some information where we had nine inches here in that six-hour period, and then there was no registration after that, so we could've received up to fourteen inches.
And that's reason, and, you're right, it, you're one-hundred percent correct, there's gonna, there will be times when we have rain, and it's going to be standing, and then it will drain off. I mean, we see that happen all the time, but as I drove around, I saw a lot of places where the water wasn't draining, and, yes, it was in the ditches several days later, and we did have a substantial amount of rain, so, uh, but I, I just think it's something that needs to be addressed. As a, as a community, it seems that's been, some of them has been pushed to the back, that's all I'm saying, you know?
Agreed.
Okay.
I would have a question, Mike, do you have the equipment that you need to get the job done?
Mike, do you have the equipment that you need to get the job done? Is that the issue, or is it just a matter of catching up with what's?
We could, we could use more equipment to get the job done better. Um, you know, like vacuums, that, you know, absolutely, we need more equipment.
Is that a part of the capital plan?
Well, a few of these things came up after the storm, so not everything is in there right now, but, um, you know, Tanya and I have been talking about it. You've got to remember, you know, this storm hit us, and I mean, there are, there are catch basins, we didn't even know we're even there until now. So, but yes, yes, there is some equipment, and I'll submit something to Tanya, uh, um, of things we think that will really help out right away.
Well, you know, budgets are living documents, and when you have an emergency or, or catastrophic event, then we can't plan for that ahead of time. So if we need to do something else, we should certainly consider that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
I, I guess, uh, Mr. Coste is up there, so I'm going to allow public comment, even though we don't?
Well, I understand. Um, the gentleman that was here earlier, um, I've had conversations with him over the last couple of days. I wish he were still here. Uh, they're in the process right now of closing on a house that's got, uh, that's, that's being affected by those catch basins on Manor. Um, for the last 25 years or so, he was Public Works Manager for Hollywood, Florida, with several hundred people under his jurisdiction. And in speaking with him yesterday, he was speaking about a, an item called a jet vac, um, which is, um, it's a pretty elaborate piece of equipment. It, it puts power into drainage lines, uh, power, uh, high pressure water to, to, to circulate and loosen the silt and the buildup of, uh, clogging in those lines. And then there's a huge vacuum that pulls it out, and it's a large tank truck. It's something that we would never invest in, however, they are out there, and, and they're used for cleaning out basins like that with.
We've used it out front, um, and it works very well, but, but it's very expensive.
I understand, it's a maintenance item though.
Right, it's a maintenance item. Now, I don't, I don't remember exactly what it was an hour, but, um, we only did about probably, I think we did about 20 houses, and it was, uh, like nine or $10,000. And they were charged us by the hour, so of course we were, we were watching the money we were spending. So once we got to a certain point, we stopped them. So, um, to get a company in here to do this for a month, you know, it's going to be very expensive, but it does work.
So it was successful?
Yes, absolutely.
And it still is successful?
We, we did that to try out a company to see how successful it was going to be, and it was for us. So we do have monies allocated in the budget, starting October 1st, for cleaning the swales and cleaning culverts. And we're going to meet internally of where we're going to start. The unit two area has the most clogged culverts, and when I say clogged, I mean 100% clogged. So I have a map of every single culvert in the district, residential culvert, and the percentage of, I guess I use the term clogged, but, you know, how, how clogged it is. And unit two is the area with the worst.
Okay, with regard to what, uh, what Mr. Turek, and it's his son Mike, who's the, the house that he's, Mr. Turk who was here lives on Sunrise, right next to the property with a tennis course that you see on, uh, number 14 on Deer. Um, Mike, his son is, uh, in the, he's selling his house and, uh, in, in the process of moving. That catch basin that he's concerned about, and it's in front of the house next door to him on the corner of Manor and Manor, has been, uh, has been flooded since before the hurricane. It's not just the hurricane flooding, that, that catch basin is full of water and not flowing. We've got the, uh, as-built drawings for all of Manor Hill, which were actually Polston drawings, and I'm sure Drew's probably aware of them. Those catch basins, uh, are slightly more than just an equalizing system. There's a, there's a, a gradual fall of, of the, um, elevation of the catch basins going from, uh, actually the high point in Manor Hill is on Manor Drive, and the fall is towards, eventually towards the pond at number 14 on, on Deer. That's the low point. And all of those, uh, all of that underground system, the storm drainage system, was designed by Polston Engineering, our district, uh, our district engineers. So, these, these are not surprises. Those drawings are available. It's pretty obvious that, uh, the water's not flowing because it's there even before the storm. And the only thing that would be causing that would be, either be collapsed lines or silted. And we've got, we're on sugar sand, so we know it's, we know it's pretty, probably 80% positive that, uh, they need to be backed, backed out. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Meeting adjourned.